Continue. Okay, I guess we're live now, doctor?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't know if we have all participants. All right, we have Kelly, we're waiting on the mayor.
Sorry about that, I'm not sure what happened.
No, that's okay, things happen, we'll be fine, just want to make sure he's given any and all opportunities.
Didn't even have my makeup on.
You can't tell, it looks good.
I need three more minutes.
I just sent him a text, I'd like to think I'll get something in a few moments. To the people that have tuned in, thank you, few minutes of patience, trying to get through some technical difficulties. Okay. Okay. He's trying to log on. Give him the number. I did get a text from the mayor, he's trying to log on, there's a little bit of a snafu, but he'll be with us. Mr. Martin, if you could, could you search for the mayor, help him any way possible?
Yes, just a moment.
Okay, thank you, sir. Good evening, George, how are you, sir?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you. Okay, let's see if I can help the mayor with this.
Okay, I think we're, I think we're gonna be set in a minute.
Hold on, I'm trying to get him a photo of the.
He's already got it.
Andrew, is there anything we can do on our end to help the good mayor out?
So, Mr. Devon, we're, I'm talking to the mayor, we can go ahead and start without him, we're gonna work on it in the background here.
Okay, suppose we do this, because we're really good at this now, the public hearing part two, can't we go through routine matters and things such as that? And put the public hearing off for a few, for a few minutes?
That's totally up to the chair, you always have the right to move things around on the agenda.
Well, in the spirit of trying to, you know, there again, this public hearing has to do with the mayor, and I, there's no way I'm going forward without him on that, that's for sure. Out of respect for his position and him as a person, okay, well. I call to order the Monday, April 12th, 2021, school committee meeting, we'll call it on for 6:39. We'll go through routine matters, I'll be looking for an approval for the open session minutes of April 5th, the 2021. Do I have said motion?
So moved.
Thank you, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Mayor, he'll be with us shortly, Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chairperson votes aye, those will be submitted as written through the recording secretary. Doctor, accommodations and communications?
We don't have any this evening, we left it on the agenda, we always have it on the agenda in case there's anything from the committee.
Okay, is there anything from committee members? Accommodations and communications? Hearing none, we'll move on to gifts to school. We have one this evening, Bay State Textos Gifts to Schools totaling $54.50. Do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote to accept, Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, we'll accept those, and as always, greatly appreciate any and all gifts to schools.
Mr. Devon, the mayor's, mayor's joined us.
Excellent, good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Technical difficulties as always, um, thank you for everyone's patience, let's see, we've got, we had gotten to the end of routine matters. At this point in time, I will need a, a, a motion to enter into public hearing for proposed year 22 budget.
So moved.
Have a second, do I, do I? Okay, I have a motion, I have a second, roll call vote to enter into a public hearing, Mr. Mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Saros?
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, the mayor?
Aye.
Ms. Doland?
Aye.
Mr. Kacoris?
Aye.
Mr. Chafe?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, that's unanimous to enter into public hearing. To hear proposed budget fiscal year 22, Dr. Hackett, you have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm gonna actually ask the chairman of Finance and Operations Committee, Mr. Kacoris, if he wants to give any kind of introduction to this.
Thank you, Dr. Hackett, Mr. Chair.
By all means, sir.
Thank you, so the Finance and Operations Subcommittee met on Thursday evening, and we reviewed some more details around the budget that we presented to you a week ago, and you'll see that the, the, the bottom line number, the reduction that we were asked to bring forward remains the same. The offsets remain the same, and Dr. Hackett will go through some detail behind some of the opportunities to help us get to this balanced budget, and I just want to let the committee know that, that the subcommittee met, and we unanimously approved bringing it forward to the full committee this evening for the public hearing. So, Dr. Hackett, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Kacoris, and good evening, everybody, so, as we know, just to kind of give some context around this, we are headed into a difficult fiscal year, FY22. That should not be a news to anyone, I certainly know that there are many school systems around us that are facing the same challenges, we know that Braintree is heavily dependent or the school system in the town are heavily depended on our local revenues. Many of those being generated by economic activity in the service sector, retail, and that we just have not seen, because of the pandemic, we just saw a lot of those businesses stall. That is also true certainly at the state level, so we are faced with, and I'm not going to explain on behalf of the mayor, if the mayor can fill out the details, if, if it's, if he so feels to, feels it's appropriate to do so, but just suffice it to say that our local revenues for FY22 are gonna be significantly reduced. There have been, we have been going into, we have gone through this pandemic, obviously, I think we've done a tremendous job, we've been buttressed by some federal money that has really helped us cover a lot of the costs that were extraordinary costs beyond what we would normally do in any given school year from hiring additional long-term custodians to get us through the year for, for cleaning, to cleaning supplies, to PPE, and to an extraordinary amount of work that we were able to do on our HVAC system across the district. We really tried to focus on spending our dollars on improvements and capital improvements, but items that was, we're going to both keep, keep our students and staff healthy and safe, but also that would have a long-term benefit to the school system, to the extent that we've been able to do that, I, you know, I feel that we have. And clearly now we are back full-time in grades one through 12, and unlike many school systems, I think we're one of the few school systems actually is back grades one through 12, so our students are back, our staff is back, and they've done a tremendous job, so going into next year will be a challenge with the revenue picture, there's still a tremendous number of unknowns. The governor's chapter 71, chapter 70 number, which is provided through the House on Budget, was, gave us a little bit more money, but overall, the town revenue, state revenue picture is down when you count some additional assessments that the town has to manage, when you, and then offset that against the revenue that the state is going to provide, it's really not putting us in a positive direction, we know, we do know that the House 2 number does include additional chapter 70 money, what we don't know is, one, how much that is, and two, what the direct impact will be for Braintree. One of the things, the only thing that will really help us, or the thing that would help us most directly with chapter 70 would be an increase in the per pupil minimum allocation. So every year, because we are, again, whether we like it or not, considered to be a community, a wealthy community, based on our property values, income, and some other factors, we receive essentially the, the year before chapter 70 number plus a per pupil allocation that is truly $25 to $30 per pupil additional, so it's straight math, you know, roughly 20, whatever that number is, times the number of pupils, students we have, around 5,800 or so, so if that number increases, then that is, will be of direct benefit, just rough numbers that could be anywhere from $50,000 to $100,000 of just additional chapter 70 funding. The good news about that funding is it is year over year, so that will not go away, that is not one-time money, but again, we don't know what it's gonna be, we may not know until July. And we've been in that situation before, as those members who have been doing this for a while know, that unfolds at different points in time, my guess would be that given the complexity of the state economic situation, that it would be, we will, it'll be later rather than sooner that we're gonna find out the true funding for next year. We know also that we will be receiving additional federal money through ESAR, the town has an allocation that, that they will receive, we have a separate allocation that we will receive. I can tell you that at least a month and a half ago, if not two months ago, we were told that we would know, one, what that number was shortly, and two, that the money would be made available imminently. We still don't know, we haven't had a final determination as to what the actual number is gonna be, we have an estimate, we don't know exactly what those funds can be used for. We are currently in this proposed budget using the maximum amount of money that we're able to use out of ESAR 2 to offset this budget and the reductions that we would otherwise have to make, so until we know what that looks like, we cannot plan on it, and I'm a little disheartened to feel, to know that we've gone this long not knowing. That doesn't really bode well for how soon we're gonna find out, and as you know, there is a timeline outlined by the charter that we have to get this budget done and into the council, but we also know that if those funds come in, then we will regroup. We will provide you with what we're calling a restorative budget, that budget will then look at the reductions that we've made in this process and prioritize for you our administrative recommendations as to what items that have been cut as a result of this budget that we would prioritize to fund and bring back through those federal dollars, or any dollars that might become available. Again, I just want to emphasize the fact that the federal money that we're talking about, the revenue offset that you're gonna see, which is about $1.4 million, is one-time money. So while you are going to vote a budget, or the proposed budget is a 5%, it's a $5 million reduction approximately. We are offsetting $1.4 million of that, of that reduction with federal dollars that are one-time dollars. So the net reduction you'll see is about 3.6 million, and of that, 1.4 is one-time money, so as you go into FY23, it's gonna be really important to keep in mind that there's a million, almost a million and a half in expenditures that you are carrying with funds that will not be available necessarily next year, that year, FY23. Now, the ESAR money that comes in, ESAR 3, and, and will have an extended period of expenditure time, so you'll have a couple of years to be able to expend it, which will help, I think, over the period of a couple, three years, allow you to kind of feather out the number of reductions that you need to make. And hopefully, we start to see the local revenue, revenue picture improve, so we are being conservative right now with what we're putting in here for a revenue offset, and if the additional ESAR money does come in, we're, we're gonna need to have that same conversation about how do we, how do we look at this, these funds, knowing that they are one-time, one-time funds. So with that, I'm just gonna start with the end. The budget that we sit in right now is $73,218,902, that's in the top right-hand column, that, that is this current budget that we're sitting in right now. We started this process with what we call a maintenance of effort budget, which is where we just take everything that we're doing currently this year, and we roll it into next year. That is simply really providing steps and lanes for all our contracts, the cost of living adjustments, some adjustments to sped tuitions that we know of, other and fixed costs and utilities that we are aware of, we estimate and put into that budget, that budget came in at $76,659,152, or $3.4 million increase, or 4.7%. That is pretty typical of our initial rollover budget, we are always around 4, 4 and a half to 5% on the initial rollover. From that point, we go through and we look at all of the retirements we know we're gonna have, we look at enrollment. Every year, we make enrollment adjustments in our budget due to enrollment shifts, and we made some additional reductions to get to the preliminary draft budget, which was $75,989,152, or $2.7 million increase, so that brought us down from a 4.7% increase to 3.78%, and then, understanding that the mayor had directed departments to make a 10% or, or to contemplate and look at making a 10% reduction, and that reduction would have been to the $76,659,152 maintenance of effort budget. So at 10%, obviously, we're, we were looking at about a $7.6 million challenge that we were trying to get to. In doing the best we could, and I, and I, we are not done, and I'll explain that in a little bit, but we've been able, and were able to get to a point where we have made a $5 million budget reduction. So the proposed budget that the Finance Committee has voted to bring to you this evening is a budget that is sitting at $71,574,118, which is a $5 million reduction from the maintenance of effort budget, the $76,659,152, or a 7.1% reduction from the maintenance of effort budget. The revenue offset that we were talking about, that I mentioned earlier, of $1,400,000 is made up of two things, one, about a million dollars worth of ESAR 2 funds, and about $400,000 worth of circuit breaker funds. Circuit breaker funds are funds that are for extraordinary special education expenses. We had been, over the course of the last couple of years, trying to get to a, a place where we were actually using those funds in the year, in, in the year, not in the year that we were getting them, but a year behind, so that we weren't spending them as we got them. We have been able to put a little bit of that away last year, partly in anticipation of knowing that this was gonna be a tough budget year we're going into, and not to mention FY, the current year we're in has been difficult and unpredictable. So we're going to recommend that we use $400,000 of that to offset for FY22. That brings the total reduction to $3,685,034, or 5%. It's important to kind of ignore the $72,974,118, because that, again, is not the number that Finance Committee is bringing to you. That is the number with the one-time revenue offsets, the actual budget that you are being presented tonight is a 75, I'm sorry, $71,574,118 dollar figure, the $5 million reduction, that would be the number that you'd be, being asked to vote on this evening to move forward to the mayor. So by category, these are rolled up three large bucket categories that make up our budget. You can see where we are, where we were in the maintenance of effort budget FY22, our curriculum instruction and school administration line understandably is the largest part of our budget, that's where all of our staffing is, and that's the core of what we do as a school department. Was that, the maintenance of effort, which was a total budget of $76,659,152, $62,081,942 made up, was, was part of that $76 million, I won't go down through and read these numbers, you can see what they are, and you can see what the categories are. Then you can see with the FY22 proposed budget, which is what we're presenting tonight, what those category totals look like, and then you can see the reductions that we're currently carrying in these three buckets for a total reduction of $5,085. I just want, it's gonna be really important to note, and it's important for the committee to understand that tonight you're being asked to vote on the bottom line number, in fact, that's really, in the end, what you are voting on is the $71,574,118. At some point, you will be voting on 10 articles that you do historically vote on, that break these buckets down a little bit more than this. That is your own policy, that's how you have done business for, prior to my arrival, certainly. But even then, you really are voting, voting on the, the bottom line, so you're not voting on the amount of the reduction or the amount of the total in these buckets. This could, this, I can't, I say could, these will very well change between now and when we get to June. There's a lot of time, as we sit here on April 12th, before we get to June 30, and a lot of things can happen, everything from unanticipated retirements to unanticipated additional expenses, expenses that we're gonna need to, to cover, to additional, potentially additional revenue. I do believe that what you are looking at, though, is the worst-case scenario, I think the $71,574,118 will only hopefully improve, particularly with, with, with local, additional local that may become available, which I don't believe that's gonna be the case, but with chapter 70 money, if that number shifts, that might provide some opportunity to add some additional or recover a little bit, that number's not gonna be significant. Again, the federal money, we would want to keep separately, and it would be a question of adding to this $1.4 million one-time revenue offset, and what would you put in any additional funding that might become available that would actually reduce the, the, the expenditure reduction of the $3,685,034. So with that, Mr. Chair, I have other slides I want to take everybody through, but I would just ask that for the purpose of the school committee, whether there's any clarifying questions, because this is kind of the big picture piece of it, and I just want to make sure everyone's clear, and then I've been clear in my explanation, so both the school committee and the public can understand.
By all means, doctor.
By all means, Doctor. At this point in time, are there any comments or questions from members of the school committee? pertaining to this?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Cobb, the mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you. Question, I guess this question would be to the mayor. I know that.
I just, I'm asking you to ask.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Any questions?
The other members that are present, you'll, I know you'll have time at a later point to ask questions. But I just want to make sure everyone's clear on the numbers and the way I've described it.
No, that's fine. Thank you.
I'm sorry. Thank you.
Any other comments from the school committee at this time concerning these few slides? Okay, hearing none. Doctor, proceed, please.
Sure. So our biggest challenge is always enrollment. And it is, it's enrollment, it has been enrollment that has been increasing over the last several years. For the last 15 years or so, we've seen a fairly significant rise, about 1,000 students K to 12 in enrollment. We're starting to see that overall number level off. But what we're faced with is the enrollment doesn't, the the number of kids doesn't always fall evenly distributed across the grade levels. And they, it surely doesn't fall evenly distributed across the town in terms of where our students live. That though, that is our biggest challenge. And we've talked a lot about this, even as we were rolling into the East Middle School Project, the South Middle School Project. We talked about neighborhood schools. We had conversations about about prior plans for dealing with the enrollment crunch and the space crunch that you were feeling at the elementary level. Plans were looked at to add on to each individual school to manage the enrollment numbers that they were seeing. And then eventually, we came to a district, a district solution that was supported by the MSBA that included bringing our fifth grade to our middle school. So while that is going to help tremendously, we know that we currently still have two schools in Liberty and Highlands that do have their fifth grades with them and will have them for the next couple of years until South is completed. But we have the additional challenge of the fact that where our, where our space availability is not, is not where our kids are. So the schools where we have space available and where we have some, we have flexibility with staffing is not where our students are. And that's problematic on a few different fronts. The one that we're really going to focus on tonight is the fact that we have, we do not have, in some of our school, schools, what we just kind of call an economy of scale. We don't have enough students to have the flexibility to make staffing adjustments, even though as a district, we have the ability to make staffing adjustments. So just as an example, and this is, these aren't real numbers, but if we just look at grade three and we look at the number of kids in grade three, and we divide the number of kids in grade three by the number of grade three teachers that we have, and I'm not, again, hypothetical, not picking on grade three. But if we take all the grade three teachers across the district, and we take all the grade three kids across the district, and we just divide them by the number of staff, we get a pretty good average number. But the problem is that at some of our schools, that ratio is much lower. And we we are, we run into a situation where we might have a couple of, we may have two sections of 15 kids, for example. So even though in in grade three overall, we can make a reduction in staffing, and we've done this year over year over year. We we make reductions in in, based on enrollment. We generally, what we do has been able to shift those resources to another grade level or to a different area. This year, obviously, is different. We're faced with reduction. But this is not a new exercise for any of you. The the challenge we have now is we've just gotten to the point, because the bubble, the bubble has moved out of the middle, elementary has moved, kind of, is starting to move out of the middle school and into the high school, is that if we have two sections of 15 in a school of grade three, we can't reduce a teacher position, a teaching position, and go to one section of 30. So that two sections of 14 or 15 really hinders us in terms of our ability to recover the resources we're putting into grade three to utilize for in prior years, shifting resources in the current year we're talking about, to be able to make a reduction. So we really have to look and have looked in this budget, contemplates actually redistricting some of our students. And that work is going to be very time-consuming. So I want to be clear that what we're proposing tonight in terms of the the reductions, to fill out some of the details of the reductions, what we're talking about in terms of of redistricting is going to take several, several months, several weeks, certainly, and a couple of months to really flesh out because it's complicated work. I've mentioned before that most school systems, when you're going into, or they're going into some kind of a redistricting, generally take a solid year or so. We're just not presented with that kind of time because we have, obviously, now we're faced with, we are faced with a budget situation that we've got to contend with. So if we just take a look at grade span, in the top line is grades K through four, the middle line is grades five through eight, and the bottom line is high school, nine through 12. You can kind of get a sense for and see where the bubble was and where it is going. And and really, if you just focus on your 2000, school year 2016, that's where you can really see that the elementary was at the peak, grades K through four, a peak of the bubble. And then you can see as we move through into 2019, and we've not included included 2020 on here because we didn't want to get into the grade five move. You can see it starts to slope off at the grades K through, at grades K through four. Similarly, you can see for the middle school, it was one of the lower enrollment periods in 2000, in 2016. And you can see that the bubble moves through. We get to 1926, which is the highest middle school enrollment that we've had in well over, well, well over 10 years. And then now we're starting to see that decline as that bubble moves into the high school. So at, in 2018, we're at 1654, 2019, we're at 1715, and we're well over 1,800 students at the high school going into next year. So the goal always is, is you see the the students start to shift grade levels, you you want to be in a position where you can move your resources primarily positions, classroom positions, to the next grade span to meet that growth. We've always been able to do it, really primarily since I've been here anyway, through attrition. You have had years where that's not been true prior to my arrival, where you've had similar budget reductions that you had to make. But, you know, we've been pretty successfully able to do that over the period of time, is just to shift those resources. When we look at the elementary level specifically, and again, we stopped at 2019, you can kind of get a sense for the schools where we're seeing a sharper decline in enrollment, more so than what we are seeing on the overall K through four picture. So we can see that at Flaherty, certainly at Ross, we are, and this is, these include grade five, we were starting to see, and continue to see decline in the number of students that is disproportionate to the over, overall decline that we're seeing as the bubble moves out of the elementary level to the rest of the school system. You can see that Highlands continues to show some growth. We have Hollis has picked up a little bit, and that's partly because of redistricting students or new students with a flexible boundary policy that we put in place several years ago from Liberty, which you can see how that affected Liberty. And you can see that Morrison is starting to show, show some decline now. So when you look at these schools in particular, this is where we're starting to see situations where we have more positions at grade levels than we really need when you think about the district total. But we can't really act on that because we don't, we aren't able to reduce. And then because if we do, we end up with class sizes that are totally unmanageable. So just, just as an example, and I want to be clear that, you know, I've picked, I picked on, picked up on these, these schools. That's not to say that we are not looking at Liberty and Highlands as well, because this is a district-wide challenge. And it's going to require a district-wide solution. And we're just not to the point now where we can provide a level of detail that I'm sure that people want to hear. But having said all that, just to give you a sense for what I'm talking about, if we look at Ross, and this is the current school year that we're in, you can see that right now we're sitting at 203 students. This includes all of our remote students who are at Ross, includes our students who are in person at Ross. You can see grade five obviously went to the middle school, East Middle School in this current fiscal year. You can see the number of sections in 2021, the year that we're in. It's a little bit broken up right now just because of the way we're running our full remote program. And then you can see the average class sizes at each of these grade levels. I mean, not to say that these aren't fantastic class sizes, but I will say that these are very difficult to maintain and sustain class sizes. There aren't many public school systems in Massachusetts that are at 1716 for overall class sizes at any of the lower elementary levels. There are some, and I'm sure that there are people searching right now to find them, but there are not many. So this is unsustainable, quite candidly, based on the amount of resources that we need and where they're distributed. We cannot maintain this class size. If we were separate and apart, having a discussion from about what would we do with this? It's, again, I just want to say that it's not a matter of closing a school because we need the space. The issue is that the space is not where the kids are. So as we look into next year, and we look at the projected enrollment at each of these grade levels, you can see that Ross is going to dip below 200 going into school year 21, 22. So if we were to take a population of our Morrison students who we would be able to to transport to Ross, and these students would be very close to and probably within at least a mile and a half, not a mile, of Ross Elementary School. It makes a lot more sense from a, certainly from a transportation standpoint, the way that our districts are drawn up right now. It just has not been revisited in a long time, certainly in recent memory. We, you know, a lot of districts go through a redistricting process, especially ones that are kind of in our demographic situation. Every five to six years, Braintree Public Schools has not gone through a redistricting process for many years. If we were to pull, and again, these are, this is an example, but these are based on where students we would look to that would make sense geographically to Ross, this number of students from each grade level from Morrison sent to Ross, it would bring our total, our total class, our grade level size to these numbers. So as an example, we would be at 68 students next year in grade one. We currently have three sections of grade one with 51 students. We could, if we stayed at three sections of of at grade one with 68 students, our class size, average class size would be 23. Not suggesting that's what we do. I'm just saying that we could, and you see that for each grade level, we could accommodate 97 additional students at Ross Elementary School and not need theoretically to add additional sections for the grade levels. These class sizes, the average class sizes, are actually more in line with what we see at Liberty and Highlands. You know, certainly, there's some, there's, there's differences between all of our schools, and we have to take all that into consideration with supports. But I'm trying to show you just the fact that we would be able to manage additional 97 students at Ross and not have it impact our staffing. That demonstrates really the fact that we have more positions than we need. But again, you can't go from, you can't reduce a section of night, you know, three sections of 19, you cannot reduce to go to two because the class sizes then become unmanageable. So the impact then on Morrison, just on the bottom here, if these numbers were sent to Ross, so the 97 that I referenced from here, the total number of students at these grade levels looks like it is, oh, yes. Okay, so we, the totals would shift down. So we're projecting 57 students. If we, if we pulled 23, we'd be at 34. You can see at each, each grade level, if we maintain the current number of sections, that the average class sizes would drop significantly. Clearly, that means that you're, you're not going to run class sizes of nine. It's going to have an impact on the number of sections that you need to offer. And that is really where the reductions show because we would not need as much staff at Morrison as we currently have if we did this movement. And we don't need any additional staffing at Ross to make that move. So hype, it's a, it's an example. These are, you know, as close to real numbers as we have. We're looking at all of our schools. This is the exercise. And this is the exercise that, you know, we really are in a position where we have to take because we just cannot continue to sustain the level of staffing that we have, given the overall drop in enrollment at the elementary level. But now we're at a point where we just aren't able to make the reductions in any kind of way that does not have a significant impact, given where our kids are currently district in the space that's available. So to kind of give you some more detail to fill in some of the numbers here, you know, and I want to emphasize that it is still very early in the process. You know, we have had some conversations with some of our staff. We haven't had conversations with all of our staff because we want to make sure that when we have those discussions that we are, that we're certain this is the direction we're going to go in. There comes a point in time where we just can't wait any longer. But we've taken the approach that unlike some school systems that have, you know, can have pig-slept staff across the board, we are trying to take a more strategic approach. And we don't need to do that. So we're not trying to hedge our bets here. We want these numbers to be real. We want the, we want people to know the right information at the right time. And some of this is going to take more time to sort out. But right now, as it stands, these are, these, these numbers are where we are. For overall administration, this is primarily central office services. So certainly, the Colbert Central Office Cost Center is, as well as some, some additional administrative staffing that's district-wide, which would include a curriculum coordinator stipend position and some additional position replacements, the net on on positions that are either retiring, resigning, or but need to be replaced. We're looking at 125,790 in in retirements and reassignments. Those would be actual positions reduced, but we would not be in a situation where likely where anyone would actually lose their job. It may be a reassignment. And then other reductions that we would be looking would be net difference between replacements and also a few other items in here, including a curriculum stipend. So about 175,000 there. Right now, about $154,000 out of custodial and maintenance. And maintenance, it includes some general overall reductions in different areas, supplies, equipment, some of those areas. And some of that, we've been able to, because of the work we've done, both with the ESCO project, but also with some of the materials and supplies that we've been able to get through this current year. And we're seeing the shifting population. We're able to make some of those reductions. We do have an unfilled custodial position that we would be targeting for a reduction as well. About $150,000 in technology that spans across some, some personnel-related, but primarily some reductions in licensures and some other areas. And then about $21,000 in professional development, which is actually kind of carried in the administration line. At the elementary level, we know that we have seven retirements or resignations that are happening. Those seven positions, we are able to not fill based on enrollment reductions, including what we're talking about with redistricting. But we, we know for sure with enrollment shifts that we do not need to fill those positions. So that's $474,000 that includes seven positions that are actually positions that will be vacant. That means those are not straight-up layoffs. Those are vacancies that we would not fill. We have an additional group that is either resigning or retiring, but the positions need to be replaced. We can't go without the positions. But we do have what we call a breakage between the amount of money that a person is retiring at and then the amount of money that it will cost us to replace that person. That 325 represents that replacement cost. And then through the redistricting and reductions in some of our specialists at the elementary level, and I'm not including specialists, I'm not talking about PER, music, I'm talking about targeted specialist. I'm talking about targeted specialist literacy, math specialist. We're looking at anywhere from eighteen to twenty four positions or about one point five million. That's a, that's a significant range, you know, and it's, that range is there because we may have some additional, potentially additional retirements or resignations that we're not aware of. One, number two, we, until we really nail down the redistricting proposal, we do not know exactly how many will fall into, how many positions will fall into that range. So on, at the secondary level, we're looking at reducing five to seven positions. Those are primarily, primarily enrollment based reductions. We have a fairly significant shift, particularly at the South Middle School, of the numbers of students we have there currently in the current year versus what next year will look like as the bubble is clearly, has cleared. You know, the eighth grade going into, going to ninth grade. It's less true at East Middle School right now, but somewhat, somewhat true. So we're anticipating five to seven positions that will be enrollment based. We do not know yet exactly whether those are positions that would be vacated through resignations or any potential retirements, but right now the range is five to seven. And then we have other reductions that we can make from supplies, self-funding activities and some other things of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So the total on the first page is five hundred thousand, nine hundred and fifty. The total on second page is two point nine million. And you can see for a total reduction right now that we're carrying a three point four million. We need to be at three point six. That's a couple hundred thousand dollars. We continue to, we'll continue to explore how we get there, but we will get there in, in, if it means that some additional reductions in staff, I mean, supplies, equipment, you know, but we're trying to really stay away from as much as we can overall general, general classroom. So that is a little bit more detail for you on what, how we're thinking about and looking at where these numbers are coming from. And that brings us back to this slide, which is again, a proposed budget reduction of five million, eighty five thousand, oh thirty four with a one point four million dollar revenue offset. So for an expenditure reduction that we just showed you of three point six eight five. But again, you would be acting on where the proposed bottom line is seventy one million, five seventy four, one eighteen. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions and.
Thank you, Doctor. Are there any questions from the school committee concerning what we've just gone over?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Dolan, you have the floor.
So, you know, clearly you still have a lot of detail that you're working through. Is the restorative budget part of like a later effort that you'll be making once this is settled? Just kind of curious to hear what order stuff might come back in if we're in that position.
Yes, the, the short answer is yes. You know, one of the things that we would be looking to do is to restore positions that are, would provide district-wide kinds of services or specialized kinds of services because we, we want to with, with redistricting, realigning students, we want to get that right. Now, again, you know, and have experienced this before where we can have, you know, we had a one-year Flaherty, I think it was seven kids, maybe six or seven kids move in, and they all moved in August, and they all moved in at one grade level. And we had to create another section and we had to add a staff member. We're trying to make, we always try to make those allowances as well. But my point is that we're not cutting program. So we're leaving art, music, P E at all levels alone. We're leaving world languages alone at all levels, A P at the high school. You know, all those things are, are staying whole in this budget because it's either, in my view, this or it's program cuts. Because you can't get to three point six million without one or the other. So with the restorative budget, we would be looking for the highest impact, district-wide highest impact items that to be the top of the list.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Any other comments or questions from the school committee? I have, I have a few. Obviously, when you hear news like this, it's devastating. I've said that. I think I've been consistent on that. You know, because of COVID and receivables being what they are, this is the situation we're in. I do have hope. I do have hope that perhaps when we talk to, talk to chapter seventy, anything above twenty five and thirty dollars per student would come back and help, you know, backfill on these types of situations. And any other monies from the state or the federal government that earmark towards schools should come back to us so that we are able to do this. Obviously, phone calls, you know, I've made a couple of phone calls to our state senators as well as our state rep. I, I, I'm waiting to hear from Representative Cuzek. He knows how dire the situation is, is, as well as two state senators. We know that, I believe the governor's got a few, shall we say, he's, he's made a few comments as of late, and I'm hoping that it, it, it shows a strategy of trying to come back and help us. It's just, you know, when we talk about thirty five to forty somewhat or more positions, we know that represents people. The good doctor and I have had many conversations that, you know, these are human beings, and it, and it weighs heavily on me, and I think to each person on the school committee, what this means. And it's, I'm hoping that we can come up with something that helps us. Thank you, Doctor. So we're moving on. Do we close public hearing at this situation?
I think you need to take comments from the public or questions from the.
Oh, excuse me. All right. Let's ask, do we take comments from the public? And does that satisfy public comment for later on?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kukoris.
This is a separate, this is a separate process.
Okay, all right.
So it's public comment on the budget specifically, and then public comment in general later.
Okay, thank you for that point of order, Mr. Kukoris. I believe we'll open this, this up to the public for questions and comments.
Okay, so I would just want to just remind everybody that some of you are logging in with just a phone number, and we won't take those because we don't know who you are, there's no identifying information. We have some who are calling in with, logging with just a first name or even a kind of a title, which we'll take. So it's just going to be important for those of you who have done that when we bring you on, just to let us know who you are before you start. So we're going to start with Hollis Dad.
Hollis Dad, you have the floor.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, this is John Fabiano. And my family lives in the area that's east of Route Three, which I have read in the ledger recently was thrown out there by the superintendent as an area where potentially he would move from Hollis to Morrison, I believe. And I just kind of wanted to express my displeasure with that. You know, my son had his kindergarten year cut short, which I'm not blaming on anyone. You know, there's not much you could have done about that last year. But then, and I'm not sure who's to blame, you know, the finger has been pointed at plenty of people. But he had the first seven months of his first grade fumbled by someone. You know, seven months of like this quote unquote half-day in-person schedules, like the insanely demanding and stressful remote learning, just poor overall communication to the parents, just like a very difficult, stressful, mentally taxing seven months. And now we make it through all that, he makes it through all that. And then like we get this potential redistricting dropped on us, which I know isn't like the end of the world, but like we're a family that, we didn't, we're not from Braintree. You know, we overpaid for a house here eight years ago. We're planting our roots, we're involved in the P T O. And now it's just like to have that stripped away from us is just like, it's, it's crazy. And I just worry again about what it does for someone like my son who just went through this insanely crazy past year. And now he's like starting a new school already next year. It's just, it's bananas. So I don't know if there's money in the rainy day fund. You know, I see other quote unquote wealthy communities like Hingham just have five million laying around that they can add to their budget. But I hope someone, Cuzak, someone up at the State House can work some magic and help us avoid this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Sarah St. Laurent.
Sarah, you have the floor.
Hi, Sarah, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I also am a Hollis parent and have a second grader who would be theoretically moving to the Morrison. I'm sure that Morrison is a great school, but I want to echo Mr. Fabiano's statements that after a year of insane transition for elementary age students who, you know, it just takes a lot for them to adjust to new things. This is a lot, and I think it's a lot to, to even consider putting them through this. It feels like we are about to rush what you have said yourselves is you normally a year-long process in order to try to force the solution. And after a year of just having to do, by no fault of anybody here, a lot of rushing into transitions, it just feels really unwise. So I just also want to say, I don't know why any of this was a surprise to anybody. I don't know about y'all, but I saw this coming miles away, that we were going to have a massive budget deficit with so much business tax in the city. So it's a little frustrating to me. Again, I know we had a million other things that were happening that we were adjusting to, but this shouldn't have been a surprise to anybody. You know, the kids are already behind where they would normally would be. And I understand that behind is a, you know, a moving target, but they're behind where they would normally be. And increasing class sizes really doesn't seem like that would help to catch them back up. But really, the biggest thing for me is the emotional well-being of these kids and rushing a process that really shouldn't be rushed. And to Mr. Fabiano's point, I don't know where things are with all of this, but I remember a couple of years ago seeing lots of statements about, you know, ten million dollars in a rainy day fund. I wonder if we could tap into that to close this budget gap. Feels like it would be a lot better of a solution to address this because just really want to voice my displeasure with the current plan on the table. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more hands up, Mr. Devin.
Okay. With that, we'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
All right, hold on, we have one more go up.
Oh, please.
Yeah, Lisa Rowan.
Ms. Rowan, you have the floor.
Lisa, you have been unmuted on our end.
Hi, sorry, Lisa Rowan here, math specialist at Morrison. I'm just wondering if you, Dr. Hackett, could give us a timeline for when the positions, when we'll know if our position is cut, and when we'll know if we have a position, if we are professional status.
I, we are working as fast as we can. I, you know, we would like to think that we'd be able to have more specific information to our staff by the end of this week. It could likely go into the last week in April, after April vacation, but certainly prior to, certainly prior to May one, or the first week in May, we will be letting people know. Shawna King.
Ms. King, you have the floor.
Hi, how are you?
Good evening.
I just wanted to kind of chime in as far as like the math specialists and the reading specialists. Just to remind everybody that when the kids were stuck at home in these hybrid models, those were the teachers that our kids were seeing, and those were the teachers that were kind of keeping them going and keeping that like homeschool connection. So down the line, if anything else COVID-wise happens, and we're back in that model and we get rid of all these extra teachers, I just am concerned that it's going to fall on these, you know, day-to-day teachers, and we're not going to have that support staff for our kids. My kids wouldn't be directly affected by the redistricting, but I was as a kid, and it's awful. It's like you, you build this community and you're, you're in this school and you know the people and the principal and you're comfortable. And especially like a kindergartner that has had so much change already then to just say, well, the numbers don't match, we're just going to move them to a different school. It's more than moving them just to a different school. And it's more than, sorry, it's more than, you know, just saying like, we need to get them, you know, with different classes and this and that. It's, it's, it's more about kind of keeping them mentally healthy at this point and kind of taking them into consideration instead of just the staffing. It sounds like we're putting so much focus on money, which I understand, but we also have to remember like their kids and families, and that's the primary job. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Doctor.
That appears to be it, Mr. Devin.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to.
One more.
No worries. Hey, listen, okay, sure.
Questions, and you want to step in line, you might want to raise your hand now.
Yes, please.
Someone disappeared, all right. No more.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to exit the public hearing.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, la mare.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Ms. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. The public hearing is ended. We will pick up in, I believe it's four, from the superintendent and staff. Second reading of the approval of the, the year twenty one, twenty two calendar. I believe you have both versions in your folders.
Mr. Devin, if I think that the, and I'll let Mr. Kukoris speak to the expectation from the Finance and Operations Subcommittee. I believe that the, their vote to bring the bottom line number to you was a recommendation. Let Mr. Kukoris speak to that.
Yes, please, my apologies.
Yes, thank you, Doctor. So as I mentioned earlier, we, we brought the number unanimously from the Finance and Operations Committee to the committee this evening for a vote. The number is the same number that we spoke of a week ago. So this would be the second reading of the actual budget number of seventy one, five seventy four, one eighteen, that we would be looking for an approval this evening from the committee.
Are you making a motion to put that forward?
I'd be happy to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Kukoris. Do I have a second of that number?
Aye.
I have a motion, I have a second, roll call vote to bring that number forward, seventy one, five seventy four, one eighteen. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb, la mare.
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Ms. Kukoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, to bring that number forward. Not easy, but there again. Moving on, I believe we are into the second reading of the approval of the year twenty one, twenty two calendar. Most people have the most recent version in your folder. Doctor, could you speak to this, please?
Everyone, I am mute. Sure, so have, this was the calendar that we had brought forward to you at your last meeting, actually, it was the second time we had brought it forward to you. There was some discussion, and you can all recall that we were talking about with this calendar, starting with students on the Wednesday, the eighth. The full teacher workshop day would be on the seventh in recognition of Rashashana, which depending on who you get advice from, in, in looking at other school systems in, in, in and around metro Boston, most school systems are planning to bring their students back on Wednesday, the eighth. But the holiday itself, it does start on, I believe, on sundown on, on the sixth and ends at, I think sundown on the eighth. So some in the community, the Jewish community, celebrate those two full days. So this was the calendar that was. So this was the calendar that was brought to you initially in the other calendar that we wanted to bring to you tonight, which is just a version that pushes that date out of student start to the 9th. That would mean that would be actually recognizing the two full days. And I'll just say that I, I think because of what we've been through, because of the pandemic, it would be, I would not want to see any student for religious reasons disadvantaged in not being able to come to school on the first real day of school. I don't know how many offhand in the, in our community that would affect. Obviously, it's a personal choice as to the, the days that whether the 8th is celebrated or not, or at least that's my understanding and excuse my ignorance if that was an ignorant statement. But I think that, you know, kind of thinking about a student who may be starting school for the first time, a kindergarten student or a first grader, and given the year that we've had, I, I recognize the, the, the request to start on the 9th. I don't think it, it really does us a lot of damage. As you can see, what happens really is that the last day of school is then on the 20, on the 22nd. So you know, you still have plenty of time. If you have a lot of snow, you just got to make sure you end by the 30th, which is the fiscal year. If you were in that much trouble, then, you know, you'd be talking about other things. And as I mentioned at the last meeting, and the commissioner has another call Wednesday, hopefully they're going to hear about federal money also, but one of the things he did put back on the table, which I thought was completely off the table, was a possibility of being able to use Blizzard bags for some portion of snow day. So I think, one, you've got enough room. Two, you've got other options. You're going to know by April vacation if you've really gotten hammered by snow. So I would just recommend that we move forward, that you move forward respectfully with version two of the calendar, which would start us on Thursday, the 9th.
Do I have a motion to accept the calendar as, as put forth by the good doctor?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Thank you. Roll call vote to accept said calendar. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Just have a question, I'm sorry. Version two, the motion was made for, correct?
Yeah, yes. Uh, September 9th will be the first day.
Okay, yeah. Yes, sorry.
Okay, no, no worries at all. Uh, Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Ms. Kacoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That'll be accepted as put forth by the good doctor. Administrative updates.
I do not have any administrative updates this evening.
Okay, moving on to public comment, public comment. We do have a few rules. Each person gets three minutes. We ask you to be courteous to all, any and all opinions, whether you agree with them or not, and to keep to things that are within the purview of the school committee. Doctor, who do we have? Whoa.
Do one second transition here. Sorry.
No worries.
Okay, hopefully you can see my screen. And now I cannot see the Zoom. So hold on just a second, please.
See, we can't see your screen. We can see you.
Yeah, well.
Unless you have, unless you have a hand on your.
Let me see if I can do this again here. And, and if any of you are wondering why the mayor had a hard time getting in tonight, I think now that I've exposed the reason. Don't know, oh, I just can't do it that way. So see the small version of it because I can't see all of you. We have, right now we have one hand up, Sarah, Sarah St. Laurent for to start, you have been unmuted, Sarah.
Hi, thanks again. Um, I just had two questions that I'd just like to put out there to you all. Wanted to understand what, if any reductions are occurring at the administrative management level related to the budget reductions. I didn't see that. Granted, I came in a few minutes late to the meeting myself, but I didn't see that in the notes. And also was wondering at what point there will be some update in the superintendent search, whether we're going to go with an interim or if it's something that's going to be posted. I would love an update on that.
I believe you'll be getting a, an update on the, uh, on the superintendent search, actually, perhaps tonight after I'm, after we go into executive session.
Great, thank you.
Just to answer your first question, we're currently carrying $175,000 worth of reductions in central office-related administrative costs as to be respectful to all those who, you know, might be affected by that. We have not identified exactly what those are. We have not had conversations, just as we've not had conversations yet with everyone who might be impacted by the overall cuts. So that information in more detail will be coming in future meetings.
Who do we have next?
I'm providing, this is my wait time because last time, every time I said we were good to go, someone shot a hand up.
That's okay. That's okay.
Not good at wait time, but.
I've become good at it. It's a necessary thing.
I do not see any of the hands up, Mr. Devon.
Okay, so with that, we'll be entering into executive session. Consideration to enter into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy for the negotiation of a personal service and collective bargaining agreement as the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating and/or legal position of the Braintree School Committee. There's a potential for us to come out and actually to, to vote and then come out with a decision. So we reserve the right to actually to come back. So I will need a, a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay. Roll call vote to enter into executive session. Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Ms. Kacoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. We will be coming back, I believe, after this to let you know what happens within that. So we will be leaving and we'll be coming back. Doctor, you'll be sending out the, uh, the meeting address for the school committee.
Just sent. So reminder, we're keeping this session open. So you're going to need to leave the session, enter the other one and then come back to this session when you're, when you're done.
Thank you.
Probably want to mute coming in.
We had to adjourn, Jen.
School commission, on the way back. Just friendly reminder.
I always forget the pomp and circumstance. I build up.
It's more for.
A lot too.
No, no. Talking about me bailing before the adjournment.
Intertwist. I'll take my own advice and mute myself. Hi. No, I'm not Frank Hackett. Yes. No. Okay, there was a little glitch with my iPad and I ran from the other room. In coming back out of executive session, based on discussions in the executive session, yeah, there are certain things we are going to have to, shall we say, check with legal to see what we can possibly do about doing something correctly at our next meeting. Our next meeting will be this Thursday at 5:15. Going to be short and sweet and we will go from there. My apologies to the people that did wait, but there again, because we do have something that's potentially of a legal consequence, it's in our best interest in that of the districts to refrain from any announcements until this coming Thursday at 5:15. With that, I believe it concludes all that was on our agenda for this evening. With that being said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roll call vote, Mr. Mayor.
Aye.
Ms. Saros.
Aye.
Ms. Cobb-Lamair.
Aye.
Ms. Dolan.
Aye.
Ms. Kacoris.
Aye.
Mr. Chafe. He's there somewhere. Yeah, he's, he's muted.
Aye.
Aye, and the chair votes aye. We conclude tonight's meeting. Our next meeting will be this Thursday at 5:15. Thank you, everyone. Greatly appreciated. Look forward to seeing you this coming Thursday.